I call the meeting to order of the Laverne Planting Commission, September 29th, 2015. We do have a quorum. Has the members been looked at the minutes?
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, August 25th as submitted.
I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. O business.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to do the public hearing too?
Do we need to do a... Okay. Okay. Have you looked at the minutes of the public hearing of August 25th?
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted of the public hearing on August 25th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. The minutes are approved for the public hearing as well. O business. Site plan blessed brothers requested by Jude Laporte. Proposed retail building, 0.8 acres, property located at 210 Waldron Road, tax map 015, parcel 27.00, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Jude Laporte. Ms. Costanza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we have looked at this item for a number of months now, and at the workshop, we had a lengthy list of technical items. We have worked with the design engineer and the applicant, and they have actually addressed all of the technical items pertaining to the sanitary sewer service extension, as well as all of the other issues pertaining to grading drainage, utilities, and they have provided the requisite information for the overlay district, including a series of color elevation and a detail of the signage. The elevations, as you can see, are contained within your patent and are on the screen. It is a mixture of brick, stacked stone, stucco overhang, and some just architectural elements pertaining to the canopy and the storefront. We have Mr. Seager here to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant, should you have any questions.
Thank you. Would you just state your name and the firm you're with?
Yes, sir. Adam Seager. I'm Dale &amp; Associates.
Okay. The members have any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions. On the elevations or the colors you've proposed there, do you think that fits in with the overlay district colors with the greens and the reds?
These are the colors that the architect and the client wanted for the building. They are willing to adjust the layers as necessary. They believe that this to be in conformance with the overlay and to be an attractive building for the restaurant and the beauty parlor and for the butcher shop in the rear.
When you look at it, though, it just says "stucco color #1 by owner." So we have no definitive coloring as laid out for any of the colors effectively. They're listed 1, 2, 3, and 4. Is that correct?
Say that again, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Well, I'm looking at the #1, south-facing elevation, and if you look at it, it just lists the numbers. It says "by owner," so there's no definitive for us to review and to accept or deny. There's no consistency there of what the color is or what the color number is.
Right. I don't know. I'm not really good with exact colors, but I would say that it's stacked stone on the bottom, glazing, and then on the top, they have the series of the yellow, green, red, alternating colors going across the storefront. I'm sorry. To me, they're yellow, green, and red. I don't know exactly what the name of the color would be.
I understand, but the surrounding buildings are of the earth tone colors.
Sure.
And so in my opinion, these colors would stick out, and in my opinion, don't match the overlay district requirements.
I think what he's saying, we just need more definitive color, what's going to actually be used.
And...
Because these colors, I'm with Graham, I don't think they match the overlay, the harmonious design that we like.
Sure. So I'm hearing two things, if I may clarify. We need to provide exact colors, and also, that's one item, and then #2, also, they need to be more conducive to the surroundings in an earth tone manner. Is that clear?
That's correct.
That's correct. And even in the stacked stone, you really need to... That and the brick. I know you've got a red brick color on the north-facing elevation, but is it mortar, regular mortar? Is it colored mortar? I mean, it makes up 23%, 24% of the face.
Sure.
Also, the color of the brick as well. I'd just like to know what the color scheme is definitely, not just #1 by owner.
This leaves it very broad.
Yeah. And then the colors of the stucco, the brick, the mortar color, even the stone. Wouldn't mind knowing exactly what the stacked stone is. It looks like two different shades of it, on the enlarged elevation down on the right-hand corner.
#5.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Do you have a copy of this?
I do. I'm looking at it right now. This one right here.
Yeah, that one right there. Yeah. It looks like it's two different colors even on that. A brown, a brown, and then sort of a gray looking one. So with all that being said, does anybody else have any other comments or questions about it?
I have a problem with the color code system that I think when you've got a business or something like that, you want to track people, and that's what it looks like he's trying to do here. Of course, I know I haven't been on the board in a long time, but this color code system has changed since I've been on here, so you might want to fill me in what your...
Well, in the overlay district, Ms. Costanza, in the overlay district, correct me if I'm incorrect, we're trying to get more of a harmonious look, rather than it being really loud colors in the overlay district. And the overlay districts along Waldron Road, along Murfreesboro Road as well.
That's correct. It does exist to promote harmonious development, so it's written such that the color should be in context with the surroundings. However, there is no color palette provided for an applicant. You know, there's not colors for them to select from, so it makes it a little bit of a middle ground, I guess we have to kind of meet on when it comes to fitting in and promoting good, you know, attractive development that still meets what the client is asking for. So I did reach out to the architect regarding the colors, because I had the same question about, you know, what does color #2 by owner mean, and she indicated that they did the best they could to meet what the client had supplied, but that these were not exact true colors. So it does leave it, you know, it does kind of leave it a little open for...
Leaves it pretty open-ended. We're not telling them they've got to have a particular color. We just ask them not to put some colors in it. It's what we're doing, John. Well, that's my opinion of it, anyway.
Well, my question was on that, though, is I understand where y'all coming from. This evidently is not a franchise business, but if it was a franchise business, would you... You would have to still consider the colors of that business?
Yes.
Yeah.
If it's in the overlay district, yes, we would.
Now, when you say overlay district, where are we talking about overlay?
So referring primarily to Waldron Road and Murfreesboro Road.
And this, how many feet off of Waldron Road is it each way?
It's about 200, I believe.
About 200, 200 to 300 feet, something like that, off of it. Just as it fronts it. As you get off of it, we're just trying to get the corridors up to date, really, and make them look a little more continuous through there, for looks. I mean, any city I know around here that has an overlay district like it, I mean, they look at colors and try to get them to be harmonious as well, blending together. Well, do we need to get these colors worked out?
I believe so. I suppose our technical issue is that not only would ask for a deferral, but there's how many deferrals that we have with this setup. That's our technical side of the request.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we've already had three, correct?
We have had three. That is correct.
But I would suggest, I mean, I would submit, in a situation like this, we offer them another one, because there was no way we could have known that it would be presented, these colors would be presented this far off, like they are, and with us not having specific colors for them to choose from, I think it's, we should have the onus of offering them another deferral for this unique situation. Because if there was a created color, one of the other things I would like to suggest, if there was a created color by the owner, we're going to have to have some sort of sample or something. I mean, if you mixed a lot of colors together, it might look, it might look good, but we'll still have to have... I mean, I would prefer. I'll just put it that way. I would prefer to see it.
A materials board.
Yeah.
A sample board.
Yes. If you said that they just mix... If a color was created that's not standard green, blue, you know, I'd like to see a sample of it.
I understand.
And just relay on to the owner, the city, along with its partners, has just invested $35 million in the widening of that road. We would like them to participate in working with this item.
Sure. That's a great point.
And I mean, another thing I'm seeing, too, as far as the, as far as the brick stack, I mean, like you said, Charlie, is that two different colors down there on the rest truck?
On the rock.
Yeah.
I mean, it's portrayed as two different colors. It may just be the printer. We just don't know.
I would, being in the design world, I would say that that, because a couple of the columns were different than the other columns, I would say that was a printing error or some type of, you know, they just... I don't, I can't imagine that they intended to have just a couple of columns of a different stone color.
I mean, they look the same with the full picture on the top.
That's right.
But then the closer up, it's totally different, so... I mean, how would you recommend we do it as far as to make it proper? Should I make a motion to extend to them one deferral?
Yeah, I think there's a wide variety of ways you can do it. That would be one way to do it. The other alternative, if the applicant wants to request it, you can accept it via that way. If there's a mutual agreement, it could be just as simple as, assuming the applicant's requesting it, a motion to approve the agreement between the applicant and the board to defer this. I'd also note, and I think this is correct, Kristin, that they've had these deferrals, but it's been due to working with the city to deal with a sewage issue.
Yes.
So, but that would probably be the way to do it, assuming the applicant was going to request one.
I believe we'd be agreeable to a deferral, whether we request it or y'all propose it.
Well, if you would, I'd just prefer you to request it, and then we'll vote on it, okay?
We request that we defer this project.
Okay.
So that we can take care of the issues brought up here tonight about the colors.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to accept his request for deferral.
I have a motion to accept his request for deferral. Do I have a second?
I'll second with provision for Mr. Jones's agreeable, is that it's for 30 days, that if they don't come back and they still drag their feet, then we will have to vote one way or the other. So for 30 days only.
Well, I mean, with this motion and this request, in two weeks, when is the submission for the workshop?
It's a month from yesterday.
Okay. By that workshop, we'd need to have the information by the workshop.
Okay.
Okay. Have to have it by the workshop. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Everybody agreeable with that? Right away, we'll have it at least two weeks prior to the meeting.
Right.
What date is the workshop?
It should be, I believe, the 13th of October.
October 13th? Okay.
Okay.
And then if you would, you may want to just review with the owner, the overlay district regulations, so you understand what we're driving towards.
Yes, sir.
And you get that from the staff.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd have... We did recognize your request for deferral.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. #2, under O business. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor in Alderman, request for subdivision acceptance for Phase 5 of Woodsong. Requested by Rick Rochelle. 20 lots on 9.16 acres, property located along Buffalo Drive, tax map 032, parcel 5.06. R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by L&amp;E Properties, developers and contractors incorporated. I have a letter here to defer.
That is correct, sir. Mr. Rochelle just wasn't able to get all of his punch list items completed, and is finishing up some ditch work. So he has asked for a deferral on this item.
Okay. Go to new business. #3. File minor platte re-subdivision of Lot 15 Fortland Acres, requested by Tina Dangerfield. Two proposed lots on approximately 0.9 acres, property located along, located at 140 Greenwood Drive, tax map 017E, Group A, parcel 15.00. R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by Tina Dangerfield. Do we also have a deferral on this one?
We do. I'll give you a very brief update. It turned out that the informations, the information pertaining to the existing house being on a grinder was incorrect. It dated back to the 80s, when they offered everybody sewer, and not everybody took it. So it was confirmed that they do not have sewer. It is not on a grinder pump, and so they are going, it's on a septic. They want to stay on septic for the existing house. Per the Rutherford County Health Department, you have to have 12,000 square feet of perk area to remain on septic. So she is going to have to have a soil scientist come out and determine if that's a possibility. If not, and she's not willing to get on sewer, then she won't be able to subdivide it. But they have asked for a deferral while they verify and determine if they have the adequate space or not.
Okay. That one will be deferred, then. Thank you. #4, under new business. Preliminary platte Lakewood subdivision, Phase 9, requested by Danny Wumble. 28 proposed single-family lots, 9.66 acres, property located along Shintara Drive and Hollendale Road. Tax map 06, parcels 19.01 and part of 23.01. R2 medium-density residential zoning district, properties owned by Amnon Schreibman Trustee and Amnon Schreibman, respectively. Ms. Costanza.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were some items that we had at the workshop. They have all been worked out since that meeting. Mr. Wumble has worked to satisfy Kyle as far as the drainage. They have extended the proposed 30-foot dedication along Hollendale to make sure that the right of way is adequate, and they have named the unnamed street, Emmett Street, I believe, Emmett or Emmet Street. I'm not sure how you pronounce it, but they have added that name and added the temporary turnaround in case, in case it does not develop in the future. So we have no technical items to address tonight.
All technical items been addressed. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept as submitted.
I have a motion to accept as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
#5, under new business. Preliminary platte Woodsong, Phase 7, requested by Huddleston &amp; Steele. Three proposed lots on 1.6 acres, property located at along Potts Crossing, tax map 032, part of parcel 5.06. R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by L&amp;E Properties, developers and contractors incorporated.
Okay. This is just the very minor three-lot subdivision for Section 7 of Woodsong, and the main issues that we had at the workshop were that the detention pond was contained on the center lot. We have since had Mr. Wumble, sorry, we've had Huddleston &amp; Steele take that and make it its own lot. He has added the required notes pertaining to the HOA, the purpose of the pond, and the maintenance, so we have no technical items to address.
Any members have any questions or comments about this one? So we're making three lots or two lots? Hell, just right here. There'd be three lots.
It's three buildable lots, one just detention HOA lot.
It was three when he originally submitted, so that's why it's still...
It's still three, but yeah.
Okay. All right.
Motion accepted as submitted, with all the technical items been addressed.
I have a motion to accept as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You all have a report in your packet for this one, because as I mentioned at the beginning, I received a deferral request on the phone, probably an hour before, before the meeting. I had made several attempts to reach out to Mr. Whitson and sent him the comments, but of course, he was out of state, and Huddleston &amp; Steele did not have enough time to take care of the comment list. So I did manage to get him on the phone, and he did ask for a one-month deferral for this item.
Chairman, I have a problem with this, is that we've been very steadfast with getting rent approvals. As you previously see, the other deferral was done off iPhone, off an Android. So the applicant was not here at the workshop. He's not here this evening and didn't file rules and regulations. With that, I'll make a submission to deny as submitted due to the applicant not meeting the requirements of the overlay district.
Do I have a motion to deny? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to deny, because the requirements of the overlay district have not been met. I think we'll take a roll call voice on this one.
You should, and also, Graham, just to clarify the record, just because it is a denial, you might want to state what parts of the overlay district are not being, in your opinion, complied with, and also, I believe that there are, this could be part of your motion, that there are requirements for the applicant to be here, I mean, to present his submission, and I don't think that that's been done, right? I mean, he's not here, so...
Correct.
Just to clarify the record.
Well, it's not only that, the eight technical items weren't met.
So let's run that. So be denied due to the eight technical items for the staff report, not meeting the requirements of the overlay district as far as the building color, size, and location, and then as well as the applicant not being here for the workshop, as well as a meeting to discuss with the planning commission, the items as noted above.
It may be good to get a second for that and then do a roll call.
Okay. Do I have a second for the motion?
Again, second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Graham?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So it has been denied.
Chairman, did you also have that?
Yes, I did. Yes. #7, under new business. Site, site plan McMahon Truck Center, Mack Truck of Nashville, requested by Collier Engineering. Proposed parking lot expansion, 7.46 acres, property located at 121 Charter Place, tax map 029, parcel 2.12, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Mike and Brad McMahon.
Mr. Chairman, the main issue we had at the workshop pertained to the need for a variance for the Stormwater Board of Appeals due to a small part of the existing parking area encroaching into the 60-foot required stream buffer. They did request the variance, and they were granted last Thursday, September 24th. They have provided all of the information that I had requested pertaining to impervious surface, the site data chart, the landscaping, and the detailed parking spaces. So at this juncture, all technical items have been addressed for this item.
All technical items been addressed. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept as submitted.
I have a motion to accept as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. #8. Rezoning of property requested by Mitchell Bowman. 42.70 acres, property located along Lake Road and Sweet Maple No, tax map 032, part of parcel 2.00. Current zoning, R1 low-density residential. Proposed zoning, R2 medium-density residential, property owned by B&amp;F Land Holdings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of this item, Mr. Mitchell Bowman would like to defer his request for 30 days. There were some comments made at the workshop pertaining to traffic, and I believe he would like some additional time to take that into consideration. I do believe he is here, if you, if anybody had any questions as well.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bowman's here.
No, I was just thought I'd look forward to discussing with the workshop our issues that we have.
We'll see you at the workshop. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go to #9. Request to set bond amount for public improvements for Phase 1, the red subdivision, requested by Mitchell Bowman. 37 lots on 22.64 acres, property located along Lake Road and Dobson Knob, tax map 032, parcel 2.00 and 2.03. Low-density residential zoning district, property owned by B&amp;F Adventure Holdings.
Okay, you'll...
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Actually, it's to you before we start on this. This is the change y'all were talking about, because I have a Jamie Reed.
He is the, he's the one that provided the estimate, the stamped letter for the estimate. So he's the, yeah, he's the engineer for the project that we require the bond to be stamped and signed by the licensed engineer who provides the quotes. So at the workshop, we had an estimate. We did not have the actual quotes provided or the contingency added. We have received all of that. You can see, we've got quotes from Sessions Paving, Hoover &amp; Gibbs Brothers. The average estimate plus the 20% contingency comes in at $116,130. Again, Mr. Bowman is here, if anyone has any questions, but this, this meets our, meets our requirements, and we have no, no technical items to address.
My question for that. Carl, did the numbers look good to you?
Yeah, everything looks good. We're figuring out the asphalt. I was in between what they were, so it seems like everything's in order.
That, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the $116,130 bid as submitted.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the $116,130 estimate as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That takes care of that one. Let's go to bonds and letters of credit update.
Mr. Chairman, everything is up to date on the bond list. We have had Pinnacle Point Phase 2, which showed up on this list probably a few months ago. There's five houses already under construction under yet, so that's probably the biggest change. There's a couple coming up, McFarland Point, Section 11 and 12, that's November 15th will be the expiration date. I will be contacting the developer on those to get those extended.
Okay. Any questions from the members? Do I have any other business to come forward?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wish someone... I'm still confused a little bit, and I want to make sure I'm right when this comes up again, but you're talking about the paint codes and stuff like that. Are you saying that if you go in here and you buy a piece of property, you're going to put a building on, this one over here is blue, and that down there is blue, and this down here is gray, you've got to stay in uniform with those? Is that what you're saying, or why you're saying it? Where did you get your color codes, is what I'm saying?
We just, we just developed an overlay district so we could have more of a uniform color.
Yeah, I understand that.
Rather than having a bright yellow, a bright orange, or a bright pink. We're trying to keep it in more of a harmonious nature, along the quarters only. If you're off the quarters, it just really doesn't come into play. It's along I-24, it's along Waldron Road.
Right.
And it's along Murfreesboro Road, is what we got.
That's the only two places.
The only three places we got, I think, isn't it? Yes.
Well, we do, John. Obviously, you need the board. We'll get staff to get you a new book with all the rules and regulations, good in the overlay.
Yeah, because I don't know, I mean, you don't know when you say color, and like, if I bought something over there, I wouldn't know what color to use if nobody said, oh, the color's there. But I see what y'all saying. Y'all just picked some similar locations. I got you.
The thing about it is, when the, when the site plans are brought in, and when we start discussing it, we always notify, and Kristin does this, and probably Kyle, too, notifies the applicant that it's in the overlay district, and there are additional